Back.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Ray.
Okay, number two, approval agenda.
Any change, Your Honor?
Uh, no changes this evening.
To approve.
So I go. All the roll.
Mcgann.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A request for local match, Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund, and Brenda's here with Ames Economic Development.
So, good evening, Council, Mayor.
Bill.
Evening.
It's you. Uh, we talked about this, uh, in November. Your council meetings in November. I've completed the application on your behalf to, uh, the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund, uh, requesting eighty thousand dollars with a match of twenty thousand, uh, with the goal of it's of assisting at least ten homeowners. Likely will get more than that. Um, that they won't have everybody that requests the full amount. Uh, the applications are due, uh, second week of January. That's why I'm here to get your approval to proceed with the application in approving the local match. There's a couple places on the application that the mayor needs to sign. I feel any questions, Jim? Um, we talked, uh, should we be successful in our efforts? We'll do a little communication out to the community. Hold the information, I'll meet you a couple different times, uh, so that we can catch as many people as possible, uh, to filter questions. We'll do a one-time submission of applications. We'll pull the Economic Development Committee in to score those, and we'll make our awards and we'll continue to be here to, to spend those funds. But we cut the checks to the, the vendors and not to people directly. We've got a pretty solid process to, we've been doing it over in Ogden and, and so like, hopefully do it here if successful.
When do you hear?
I'd actually, pretty quick turnaround sometime in February, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so well, soon as we're here, I think we get the meetings scheduled, so you can give people as much time as possible, uh, to get the work done and get materials ordered and ran into a couple supply challenges with the, they had six homes that we did over in Ogden's. We had half the order that we're asking.
Is that?
Yes. Right, but only.
This is ju- kind of the residential BDF program, right?
Yeah, yeah, and, and actually, the focus really is, the way I wrote your application was really on safety. So, the most affordable option for sometimes is to fix up people's existing homes. So it's safe, rough wiring, plumbing, um, which really not designed for aesthetic sort of items.
They could, they could build handicap ramps that.
Absolutely, from an accessibility standpoint, things where they might trip and fall. So, anyway.
What is?
Half the bubble, eighty percent of the median income, so.
What is your, um, usual participation rate or interest? So, um, you get quite a few that.
You know, we can opt in, out, site to Ogden. Um, we had more interest than we had funding, and then we had a couple people that fell over the income requirement. That'll be a piece of the puzzle, is we'll make the awards contingent on final, uh, final approval of all their income stuff, so. Yeah, there were a few we weren't able to fund, um. Yeah, so I, we'll, we'll do our best, and again, we'll engage. It'll actually be the economic development, if it makes the selection, and then our opposite will do the patients, so. And hoping we'll have a lot of people interested.
Sounds good.
Our matches coming from LMI, is that my recollection? Where is it coming from?
The, I got, for.
From economic, from economic development.
Yeah.
And the plan, Bill, isn't it, we're gonna straddle two.
We gotta try to do it, yeah, over, over two years, yeah.
We'll make the, the, the local match over two years, so. Four hundred and thirty up and after.
If he is getting the word out, I don't think we'll be for a lack of applications once the word's out about it, so.
So we'll use all of our communication panels and I'll call it in your, your Facebook pages to push that out as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Sounds good.
Their motion?
So I move that we approve the fun match.
Second.
All the roll.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Both the back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Yeah.
Bert.
Yes.
Mcgann.
Yes.
I'm gonna make it his safe. Shoot him to me.
I got him.
I don't know, are they in it?
Think so.
Okay, we'll go with it.
Thank you.
Bye.
If you could do the full roll before I said that, I'm sorry.
Yep, you're right.
Okay. Have a nice evening.
Drive safely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, number four, reporter standing committee, A Policy Administration.
No report, Your Honor.
Public Safety, Stephen.
Uh, no report.
Utility, uh, update on for Ultraviolet Disinfection Project, Bill.
Sir, so on your desk is a copy of a letter that, uh, Fox sent to King Construction. Behind that is a letter we received from King Construction in regards to the UV project. That letter, uh, from King was a request for increased contact price and times, uh, for differing subsurface conditions as described in their letter. So they're asking for more money and time to the tune of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I believe. And, uh, the letter, the front part of what you have is, is, uh, Fox Strand's reply to that. And, so, this is obviously a hurdle that we're facing on this project. I thought it was time to bring it forward and let you know about it. I can't say where this is gonna go at some point. There could be at some point where we, uh, need to go into a closed session, and Jim will make that determination if we, if we need to. I would ask that, um, you view those documents. So that you're familiar with this. And, uh, Lori is here from Fox Strand. And as you know, on this project, uh, due to some of the hurdles we've had, I brought SEH on board to represent the city directly. Perry is here as well. I'll start with Lori. Uh, do you, uh, have anything you wanna talk about? Lori, on this letter, uh, if you just wanna summarize it a little bit?
Um, I can summarize, you know, their requests, which are, are a response quickly. Um, so, in November, we got a, a request from King Construction for differing subsurface conditions. That just means that they were excavating and drilling, they were drilling sheet pile, that they felt that the soil type was different. It was represented in the contract documents. They said that there was inaccurate information provided. We reviewed their claim, um, there were soil borings, eleven provided from the project, the plant project in nineteen ninety-three. And we went back and reviewed that, there were eleven borings. We didn't agree with their claim because, um, nine out of those eleven bore, you know, this very tight, hard clay, which they were experiencing. And the, the bottom of the boring, and even the new structure, didn't even go, didn't go to the bottom of the structure that they were dating, and certainly didn't go into the soils they were encountering with the sheet pile. So, really, there was kind of a lack of information necessary. They're not supposed to extrapolate any test results to give them. So if you give them a soil boring and it goes twenty-five feet and it shows sand and gravel, they're not supposed to assume, it's very specific, that their sand and gravel well below that, all the other borings on site, except that one and one other. So it's very hard, tight clay that they were experiencing and having problems driving, driving their sheet pile through. So, based on the contract documents, our response to that was, no, we don't believe the soil boring was inaccurate. You know, there was basically no information provided in some of those steps. So they didn't provide any additional information to prove that was otherwise the case, so. Um, that was, that's basically a summary of their, their letter. Um, now they have thirty days, so we're, we're, they didn't completely follow the process in the contract documents, but they submitted a change request. We have thirty days to respond, which we did within a few weeks. Now they have thirty days to respond to our, uh, engineer decision. The engineer decision is considered final in the contract documents, so if they don't agree with that, then you can submit a claim. So then it follows the claims process, which is all laid out in the contract documents as well. If they submit a claim, one of the first steps is that they can, everyone can provide additional information. There can be a, uh, sharing of information in direct negotiation phase. If nobody wants to negotiate, if that's not going well, it moves on to a mediation phase. And anyway, the legal remedies that are set forth in the contract, that's what we're waiting to back from them. We haven't had any words since we responded on December ninth, so. I'm holding pattern right now on that topic.
How long does that whole process take if it all goes out, stands out?
Well, I should probably let Jim respond to this. Um, the legal process varies widely. It can drag out for years. It doesn't depend, you know, it depends on a lot of different things. But if you actually go to a mediation, um, you know, mediation, if you go quickly, mediation, it can also drag out for years. Jim, you wanna?
No, that's exactly correct.
So there was.
If it, if it ends up in court, yeah, it will be years, but with the mediation process, much quicker.
I had a chance to review the contract documents, they're pretty clear. I, I've read hundreds during my career, and the, the language in our contract is clear.
Are you gonna turn me?
No, um, but I worked in construction and read, I've read several of your contracts as well. But, uh, the, the contract language is clear. They, we gave them the option to do additional borings prior to the bid. And then if they would have found those conditions that were differing, they could have requested additional information and stuff, so we gave them that option. They chose not to execute that. Um, it, it, it's pretty clear, I, I'm no lawyer, but.
No, I agree, I'm a desk.
So.
I agree with Laura's response.
So, and they, they're facing, right to date, a hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars in liquidated damages. And that doesn't even take into consideration when they're, they'll actually complete this, which will probably be a couple of months, anyway.
Their latest schedule showed them being done in April and having the UV system up and running in January twelfth. You know, maybe that, so it's already out of date. Number, haven't started the electric board yet, a little snag they had. Unfortunately, the contractor, the owner passed away and they had to find something else, but, um, we're not sure when they'll be done.
And, and the council needs to understand too, that we're facing additional change order, change requests from CEH and from Fox due to the delays of this project. So, and that number is yet to be determined because this, we aren't done yet. So, um, I think to date it was, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars or something like that. Our retainage is five percent, which is seventy-nine thousand, it's not gonna cover it. So, am I right? Pretty close, so. Um, I mean, we have options, we have liquidated damages, we have the retainage, but we also have facing their change order, change request. The problem with them not following the contract language, um, and having been in that position is if they don't follow the contract language, we basically are writing them a blank check. If they come at the end of the thing, say, well, we screwed up and we, you know, it's gonna cost us a hu- two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finish this project, and we write that check, we wrote them a blank check. We don't tell them how to do their job. We tell them what we want them to do. Means and method is on them. So, and I read through their letter, and their letter is full of it. So. Putting it mildly.
So, as stated, the, the substantial completion is certainly passed. The final completion, we passed that on the original contract?
November ninth, substantial is August.
Okay. Uh, there are as well, which I've discussed in there previously, uh, two other change orders, um, that need to be, uh, taken care of as well, whether that's all thrown in the mix as we try to solve this. Obviously, the goal is to try to solve it, um, but again, the contract's the contract, uh, this we'll, we'll have to see how, how it goes. Um, Perry, do you have anything on behalf of the city?
I don't think so. Um, I think we did a really good job of replying back to King Construction on this, right to the point, and I agree with everything that she's had and Mormon, that they really don't have a leg to stand on at this point in time.
So we'll continue to monitor and move forward, um, and see where, where we shake out. I think one thing we do need to do, future pay requests from King in the future to make sure that, uh, if there's liquidated damages, that that is covered in what we owe them, so that we don't get cut, or caught short on the, on the back end of this.
That's a good point. I don't recall, Pam, I know I signed about two here, and I don't recall the rest, we should.
Yeah, we have two tonight over a hundred thousand, so I think that takes us to, remember, eight hundred thousand or less? Yeah.
Eight minutes, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Five hundred and sixty, so we need to keep that in mind as those pay requests come forward for approval that, uh.
Probably getting to the point where we need to seriously discuss that then, because we've got several hundred thousand in liquidated damages now, but we really don't know when they're gonna be done, if they're even gonna be later. Proche.
Yes.
We have a bid bond, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll keep monitored. Perry, obviously, will be involved as well. Um, so that's the number one item on that that I wanna discuss. The second one is, um, because of the delays and everything, uh, Fox Strand has asked for a contract amendment for additional fees. Um, the amount is, let me get to it here. Is it fifty-three thousand, Lori? Fifty-three thousand ninety-five, is that correct? And, from what I, and Perry, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you sent me something on this and I read this. Twenty-nine thousand, six thirteen is for the additional services for the UV project, correct? And then you have seventy-nine, fourteen, fifty-six, ninety-four, fifty-six, seventy-four, and forty-two hundred. Those involve what you're, what you're estimating as the change order fees on the two change orders that we have?
Um.
Either one of you that can answer that?
I might have to summarize it all as well, you know. We broke it down into one pass order amendment bill, and it's got, uh, it's got two, three, four, five different topics.
Yes.
So, um, some of those, the first one, they're waiting late completion, and that's, so that's shit, we're estimating another six months. Um, we've got, it's just a hourly, an hourly, not good meeting, so if they're done early, we wouldn't spend that much, but it, it would be on six months. Um, hopefully that's not the case. The second one and the third one are for changes in the field that were unforeseen conditions due to existing structures that were leaking. Uh, and there was a little time, so you wanted us to be on site watching every day so that we can do a time to go with the contractors, so that they weren't kinda having a blank check, and we spent additional field time overseeing some of that work while they repaired some tanks and pipes through tank walls that were leaking. So that's items, um, second items. There was a hazardous environmental condition, there was a little extra time spent in, um, dealing with that, coordinating with, uh, Geotech meetings and all of that on site to review that condition. And that's an unforeseen condition. And the last one is an effective work item. The contractor actually put the wrong sized pipe in the tank, and they spent, um, we had to, they had to, we basically had to spend time reviewing their redesign, reviewing their proposed fix, and being out there and observing, uh, spec, even concrete port back, said to ship it all out, pour it all back. So that's something that you charge back to the contractor, the very first item is something that you charge back to the contractor. But the middle three, which made the period, um, the, which sums to about seventeen, more than that, those are unforeseen items that the contractors and title two and engineers.
But those are the change orders that we have not settled on yet, correct?
That's right. The contractor's not quite done with all the work on one, when he is, once he backfilled and installed the pipe that was affected by this, then we'll wrap all that up into a change order for the contractor, which will have days.
Okay.
Would they hit it pocket of methane?
There was some pocket of explosive gas that basically dissipated. Yeah, it bubbled up, they sent a video, it was bubbling. Got Terracotta, got Geotech, all that, they did probing, and eventually, how long was it before it went away?
Couple of days.
Yeah, and it kinda stopped John for a while.
See, I'm not totally convinced that the sheet piling didn't cause some of that damage.
I know we, that comes up.
And I, I don't know how anybody can, can determine otherwise.
I don't know.
Especially when, when we have reports of people feeling the vibration blocks away. So if you can imagine driving sheet piling within twenty feet of forty-year-old pipe, it'd be reasonable to assume that that probably did some damage. Again, that's means and methods. And, reading in their letter, they, King said they had to reroute piping because of the sheet piling. That's a design issue. That's not our fault, that they ran that pipe and then discovered that, oh, we put it in the way of the sheet piling. Now we have to rerun the pipe again, and then they charged us to do that. Uh-uh.
They, just, just to clarify, they're all really good points that you found in that letter. I don't know if they're gonna come back later and ask us, but they haven't actually asked for time and money for that. They say that they did that, all that on their own dime. Who knows if they're gonna come back later, but you're taking that, Perry. Um, so they, they go on and on about all this, had to relocate this, relocate that, we did all this at our own expense. It's how they sum that up. But there's a chance that they passed the window. That doesn't mean the contractor still can't do that, even though they're busy, they're still completing six months later.
I have a, I have real heartburn with the fact that they proceeded with extra work without being authorized to do it. No one does that.
And that's.
When you, when you do that, you assume the risk for that work. Because there is no guarantee that you're willing to get a change order. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do a quarter of a million dollars worth of changes, better darn well have some, a signed document saying that you're gonna get paid for it, or.
Yeah.
Like I said, you're writing them a blank check if you do this. So, I, I, I just have a lot of heartburn with. Including that sheet piling thing. I, no one can convince me that that, those leaks didn't occur after the sheet piling went in. I've been around that stuff all my career. The earth moves when they put sheet. So.
So, we have presently just over fourteen thousand dollars in outstanding invoices from Fox Strand that we have not paid because we're not authorized to pay them because of it's exceeded the contract. So tonight, we're looking for some guidance on, um, the contract amendment. And, uh, the total is fifty-three thousand ninety-five dollars or not to exceed. Is that fair? That outreach? Yes?
Well, I think the invoices that you're getting, when we do field services, we do hourly estimates for projects. So for this project, we estimated two hundred hours. If, if you got a great contractor, things are going well, and you don't spend a lot of time, we've been going over that hourly estimate on that one. That's not in here because it's not required to be, because it was just an estimate. Um, although we can, if the city feels better and would like an idea of what that's gonna be, we could do another amendment to estimate that. We're trying to keep that a minimum, we're actually only going out once every other week, maybe once a week if it's, you know, if we feel there's something important going on, but since it's good to have documentation of what went on, otherwise if they make a claim, you don't have anything to go back on. Same time, you know, as we've gone over the budget, so we're trying to, um, not go out there very much. But we definitely have gone out over two hundred hours, and that started a couple months ago.
And that's not included in this contract amendment?
Because that was an hourly estimate in the original contract, so you can go over that without needing amendment. But we could involve that and do a new amendment. And put an estimate to it, so it's not so open-handed in the city.
So then we're increasing the fifty-three thousand?
The amount, the original task order, and we'll go over that by the additional field services as well.
Yeah, see, we're not done.
Because we're not, right.
We're not done.
No, until King signs off, they're not done.
Right. Well, we can do another task order just to cover the field services, but just that hourly estimate to what we think it will be, extending it out six months, if that helps the city.
Need to ask Jim this, though, if that's part of the cost that we could recoup from King, right? That's their responsibility.
That would be my opinion, yes.
Okay. That's part of a liquidate, is that part of the liquidated damages, or is that above and beyond that?
Liquidated damages have to be tied to actual damages, it just can't be some figure you pick out of the air, so obviously, these would be part of that.
Okay.
And solidify the chance of recovery on liquidated damages.
Along with the retainage we could use too, right?
Or you can use that to repay it, yeah.
Yes, to pay that.
So the goal, obviously, of staff is that we recoup all our extra expenses on this. So to me, that includes the extra that we're giving Fox Strand and what we're paying, uh, SEH for having to bring them in on this project.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that is my goal, to do it. I don't know, but if we'll reach that or not, but, I mean, that's what it should be.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
Good.
So, does council want her to redo the contract amendment to include those other fees before you vote on it?
Yeah.
You wanna submit another one, we'll bring it to council on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Or sixteenth?
No, okay. Be careful. Existing.
Or the third, I'm sorry.
Third.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Existing and noise. Yours can wait on.
Yeah, and what we'll do is we'll have them in the bills, and they'll be ready to pay, if council proves it'll, they'll be ready to pay the week of the, of the third of January.
And, okay. Perry, SEH already, already gave us.
Just over fourteen thousand. Uh, do you have the numbers what we've paid SEH so far?
You provided this. Additional costs? Eleven thousand. Today.
Okay.
No.
You think you billed around eleven thousand?
Yeah, I think with.
Today.
Yeah, today.
Will be additional.
All right.
Yeah, that would, yeah, well, we just got an invoice today. Did they include that?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause I added that on.
Because if they don't finish this till March, you're looking at another three months of. So.
Yes. Okay, we bet. Thank you. Yeah, Economic Development Committee, uh, Terry.
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, Department reports, Bill, unofficial ed. Or Dave.
Thank you.
It's gonna be.
I wonder if that was an item in your package tonight, uh, your consideration. Um, it's gonna be a site plan for, I think. Uh, just low background, uh, the site plan is for a little over a thirty-nine-hundred square foot building, uh, located on probably two acres at twelve, twelve Hawkeye Drive, which is the southwest corner of Southland and Hawkeye Drive. Um, in review and speaking with, uh, People's Bank, the proposed building will meet that thirty percent brick-facing requirement, um, as the building's gonna be constructed with a hundred percent of masonry materials. Um, Engineering Resources Group submitted a stormwater plan on this also. Um, there was one issue that SEH had, um, reviewed and wanted some changes made too. We reached back out to them and they are willing to make those changes, um, and they're gonna be resubmitting a stormwater plan for that, um, to meet some of the SUDAS requirements. Um, one variance on this, uh, when we took PNC was to reduce, um, some of the site visibility to a driveway on Southland from a hundred and seventy feet down to one hundred and twenty feet. Uh, this was due to, uh, restraints. Um, we looked at this area, and that reduction was consistent with some other commercial properties down there. Casey's, uh, the chiropractic office, we didn't feel that, um, reducing that was gonna cause any issues. Uh, both staff and, uh, PNC has reviewed this and recommended approval of the site. I'll try to answer any questions if anybody has any.
It wasn't clear to me on the map, they have sidewalks all along the, the east and north side.
Correct.
They will?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move. Second, all the roll.
Second. Mormon.
Yes.
Both the back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
McGann.
Yes.
Science.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, Finance Officer Andrea. City Attorney Jim.
No report.
Director of Public Works, John, or, uh, Waylon.
Is solution for streetlight poles, this includes our area of our next year's payment project on West Park Avenue and South Marion Street. Getting this taken care of before the project, letting it here in February. Staff recommend, there's two, two options on here. Staff recommends a second option where the city would purchase the pole up front, place the lights on. Uh, if you went with the first one, it would be a forty-four month payback, so we feel that greatly in our benefit to just purchase the pole up front. And add five lights to that area down there.
That's.
That's, that's that one. And another, another issue or another subject, I guess, would, will.
They're on resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Follow the roll.
Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Graham, Graham?
Yes.
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Second note is I just want you guys to know that I signed the second half of our. C I P, the sewer lining project for South Boone, South Green. Uh, I signed another contract with AccuJet on Perry to finish that project up to the trunk main. So everything from Boone Green and Woodland down to our main new trunk that was put in and. The uh, the major upgrade will be all lined down on that stretch there. So that's taken care of.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next up, engineer. Yeah. Okay, so two pay requests. First one, let me just second and get it. From King Construction for the U V project. For a hundred and forty-eight thousand six seventy-five. This has been approved by Fox Strand. And uh, they have recommended payment of this uh, bill.
Second, follow the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Science?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
The second one is resolution three zero five nine for the amount of one fifty-five, five sixty-two, fifty. Uh, Fox Strand has recommended payment of this as well for the U V project.
How close are we getting to the gray area?
I thought he said we had five hundred thousand left.
At like sixty-six percent of the project.
So that five hundred thousand left to be billed after these two?
I think each pay request that comes in now needs to be evaluated to see whether it's, it's paid. Other, I think if you, what I got protracted out uh, from Fox. For estimated damages, if complete everything on task, which she's already said they wouldn't on the January twelfth. We're at uh, three hundred and forty-eight thousand in liquidated damages. So I think we have to monitor each pay request from here on out. And Perry can help us with that when we get them. And to make sure that uh, we're not paying money that we may try to uh, get back.
Great.
So moved?
Follow the roll.
Frank?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, next, next up, Public Safety, uh, Chief Adams.
Yes, your honors, real quick, uh, last meeting I had sent, I was bringing back a resolution. Unfortunately, after we did some more digging, um, because they received a W two for their hour. Forty cents an hour, whatever their hourly rate is, they're not eligible to get that. Uh, insurance policy. Um, so with your approval, I will continue to look for something that's comparable and uh, but then obviously anything that we would come back. That's going to spend, we can bring it back. But with your approval, I will continue to look at a program to be able to supplement that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep, Chief Weeble.
Uh, real quick, your honor, um, as we talked about last time, uh, the bridge is open. Um, uh, however, tomorrow, uh, Court Avenue and R I V crossings will be completely closed. So the Union Civic is going to come out. I got the notice today that Union Civic is going to come out and take out those crossings starting tomorrow, so.
Uh, City Administrator Bill.
Thank you, uh, resolution thirty sixty. Uh, authorize an urban renewal joint agreement with Boone County. So, excuse me. The county's working on a project with Landis east of town. Uh, part of that property lies within two miles of the city of Boone, so they're required to do this joint agreement on the urban renewal. Legal has looked at it. They're fine. Depart, or billing offices looked at it. They're fine. So we just need a uh, motion and approval of this so they can continue on with that project.
Approve.
Second.
Follow the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Megan? Frank?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes. Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So I have some, okay. Number six, consent agenda. Any items on consent agenda that you'd like to move and discuss separately? If not, I need a motion to approve, approve to approve.
Second.
Follow the roll.
Megan?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hey, number seven, we have no items. Rate Mayor's comments. Um, just want to. Thank J R. This is his last, also made it, right? Thank you for your time and. Been a wild, wild ride. Available when I called him, doesn't matter what time of night. And he's always been able to make sure it's, but he's always answered his phone. I appreciate that because usually someone's calling screaming at me and I want to pass it on to him.
So even, even when he knows the two calling, he still answers?
Basements were flooding. We sat, talked on the phone and uh, he's just been. Been fantastic to work with and I'm thanking for his service.
Thank you. Right.
But.
Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement.
Yep. Uh, number nine, any council comments? Uh, number ten, any public comments, items not on the agenda? Not this meeting, is adjourned.